Has this winter been hard on your vehicle? Well, tax season is right around the corner. Why not stop into Dream Motors and put your tax return to good use? Dream Motors has a large selection of pre-owned vehicles for any budget. Come in today and take a look. That's Dream Motors at 445 North Montana Street in Dillon. Looking for made in Montana food products? Look no further than Town and Country Foods of Dillon. Has this winter been hard on your vehicle? Well, tax season is right around the corner. Why not stop into Dream Motors and put your tax return to good use? Dream Motors has a large selection of pre-owned vehicles for any budget. Come in today and take a look. That's Looking for made in Montana food products? Look no further than Town and Country Foods of Dillon. Has this winter been hard on your vehicle? Well, tax season is right around the corner. Why not stop into Dream Motors and put your tax return to good use? Dream Motors has a large selection of pre-owned vehicles for any budget. Come in today and take a look. That's Dream Motors at 445 North Montana Street in Dillon. Looking for made in Montana food products? Look no further than Town and Country Foods of Dillon. Has this winter been hard on your vehicle? Well, tax season is right around the corner. Why not stop into Dream Motors and put your tax return to good use?
Call the meeting of the city council for February 1st, 2023 to order. First order of business, the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Minutes, approve the January 20, or January 18th, 2023 regular council meeting minutes.
Moved to approve.
Second. Been moved to second to approve the minutes?
Under the fire department number eight, the very last line says that calls are up 30% from 2020. Is that supposed to be 2021 or is it 2020 correct?
2020 is correct because 2021 we had 179 and in 2020 we had roughly 120. Thank you. I just wanted to make sure the script cracks.
Any other questions, comments, corrections?
All for the question.
All in favor of approving the minutes for January 18th, 2023, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the same sign. The minutes have been approved unanimously. Petitions and communications. First one, a request from the police union to look into forming a Department of Public Safety. Uh, our union president for the police came and visited me, was it Friday? I think some, one thing he was getting off shift, he was real tired. It's kind of, but asked me to look into it. So I started digging through the Montana codes and came up with this. There's a lot of different forms you can take it. So it's going to be a process and I just wanted to bring to the council's attention that, hey, they're looking at it, we need to maybe look at it to save a lot of money. Right now, I know Tool County and Shelby's been doing it for 30 years. I've tried to contact them, I sent a couple emails, I haven't got any response back of how it's working. The other one, Deer Lodge was in it for 20 years. Was kind of a MOU, a loose MOU. A councilman and a commissioner up in that county got in a fight more or less and they disbanded it. Now they're trying to look at redoing it again. And they say, you know, what I can read in most paperwork, a lot of the small rural counties are going to it or trying to go to it.
Do any of the officers that are present have any thoughts on it? Please use the microphone.
It's up in the other microphone.
So we've, we've talked about it. And we're just trying to figure out the best way to more effectively and efficiently serve all of these citizens of Beaverhead County and not just Dillon. I know to benefit the county and the city in a few different ways. So we're just trying to figure out the best way to go about it and to help better service all the citizens.
Can you give us any specific examples?
Um, so right now we do not have any detectives in either department. So whether a deputy or an officer catches a case, depending on the case, is that sex crime, child sex crime, uh, mass storage break-in, it takes that patrol officer, that patrol deputy off the street for who knows how long. So you've got that, that officer working, I mean, they're working. They're working a very serious case. But who's patrolling the city, who's patrolling the county at that time? So if we had the ability to have a detective or two, you could have them strictly working on a serious case like that and still have somebody patrolling in the area. Also, I know the county gets off at three, uh, three in the morning, then they're on all, on call and a call-out basis. If we were able to combine, I foresee that we'd be able to have a bigger patrol division and have 24/7 coverage throughout the city and the county. Just a thought. Obviously, there's a lot that has to go into it and scheduling and looking into it further. But that's just something I foresee.
That's due to require several additional officers there.
When you're combining the city with the county, instead of taking two small departments, now you have a bigger department and you have, you do have extra officers because now you're, right now we have a chief and assistant chief. That could cover a detective position and allow another patrol officer out there already. Because now you're down to one administration versus two administrations. Opens up a couple of spots right off of that right there.
So basically, you're talking about combining the sheriffs and the police department as one whole.
It'd be a Department of Public Safety, yes.
What do the officers get out of it?
What do the officers get out of it? Uh, you also have more patrol officers on duty, you have, if you have a detective, you again, you don't have a patrol officer who's in the office.
No, I mean the individual officers, what are they going to see out of this, benefit or detriment? How does it benefit you guys that are wearing badges?
Need more backup? Need a lot more guys to be on shift? Like we were saying, possibly a bigger patrol division, which allows for better officer safety, uh, quicker response times in the county.
Sheriff, would you be so kind as to address that? I don't know if you've looked too good enough yet. I understand that your officers are stretched just as tight as the city officers are, right or wrong?
We're stretched out, yes.
So it still sounds like we're talking additional manpower someplace. You've got to dig up the funds to pay for it. Is that correct or incorrect?
We dig up the what?
Dig up the funds to pay for it.
Yeah, we need digging up some funds.
Mr. Mayor, um, could you tell us what the process is for this kind of conversion?
Uh, there's, what I'm, so far what I've got on Mikey Greenwood, which is tough. There's one, we could almost do it immediately by writing an MOU, but they advise against that because of all the weakness of them. The other is forming this public, or Department of Public Safety, which would take, it takes a while to get all the finances, everything going. It's more, it's very
When did the ci- when did the citizens of Dillon get to vote on this?
There, it comes back, be the council and the commissioners. A lot of it, we could do it as a community saying it is okay to do it, or you could send it to the voters also. There's, you know, there's different ways of setting it up. So.
This is such a huge situation. It seems to me that, um, we would want to be as transparent as we could be and as inclusive and have the citizens vote on whether the people of Dillon would like their police department to be eradicated.
You know, and that's what it is, is they talked to me Friday, that's why I put it on this agenda to throw it to the council to start thinking about it. Because it's going to be a process.
I, I think there's a lot of information we're going to have
We're going to have to pull in probably from different counties, from the state and everything to do it right, too.
Now, is, I know the police and sheriff's department is one whole. Is that the similar, similar situation? Is that what we're talking about?
No, this is just
Well, I don't understand how you can get more officers like we have, just so many officers in the police department. And if you bring in the sheriff's department, who's paying for who to do what here? That's what I, where I'm losing it here.
Uh, it's in that book, kind of states how pay. I've read it every day, three or four times a day, trying to, you know, when Mr. Jones or attorney gets back, I'm going to probably go talk to him and it's a lot of legal jargon that
Well, I'm guessing it's just like any other district.
I mean, this would basically, they would form a district and I'm assuming the district would be the whole Beaverhead County, so everyone covers. We would have to encompass the town of Lima, Wisdom, Jackson. So everybody would be in the district, but the only difference is, is this public safety would require, let's say, and we're going to keep it simple. They have a $1 million a year budget. The city would pay half, the county would pay half. Or something similar to that, not whether it's 50, 50, 60, 40 or whatever that come out. But that's, that's where they would get the money every year. The city council would vote to say, okay. Basically, we like the library fund, I guess. We would vote to give them a budget. The county would vote to give these guys a budget too. And
But the lines of authority, whether, where, I understand that.
The way it would be is if it, if we, the county state has an elected sheriff, the elected sheriff becomes the overseer. More or less, you have to set up a commission for this public safety, the public safety commission. You could have three people on the commission, five people on the commission, or seven people on the commission. It sets up if a three-person commission, one person from the county commissioners appoints, one person from the city appoints a member. And one member comes from the combined meeting between the city and the county, gets together and puts another.
But 50% of the revenue to support
In, I, I can't agree on the revenue yet. I've read that, that, you know, city can't pay so much or they can throw all the taxes out right now and then the county comes up, this is how much we need to fund this public safety committee or Department of Public Safety, get, what is it, officers, the jail, the 911, anything that does with law. And it goes out as a statewide or a county-wide tax. There's a lot of things, parts to it, so.
I want you guys to understand, I think it's a good idea, but we got to know where the money should come from before we make any type of decision. There's a lot of information we need to have, yeah, before we can Just the same as the street maintenance district, it would, it would have to move it in and then the district would be taxed to a public safety.
Well, it's a little different for you.
Well, it is a little different, but it's kind of the same demo idea. The three, the three-person member commission would be voting to set the district rates, the same as the council sets the district rates now.
Well, I think that one of the things that's very different is that when people are upset about their taxes, they can come to the city council. They elect us and this is where they come to. This would take accountability for their tax dollars away from, but
You know, that's, look, if it could be solved in four days, like since I've talked, knew about it, it'd be easy. One of the questions you're asking, I've asked it too, I'm going through that book, calling people, trying to find out about it, so.
I think you should
I just want people, the council to know it's coming down the road. Get on your line, pull up the MCA, start doing research. Because it's probably going to try to push it down the road to see if it's possible for Beaverhead County.
I think you should assign this to a committee.
I was going to say, it should be filmed with fire and order or something like that. I'll make that motion.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Council, uh, I started in the Beaverhead County Sheriff's Department in 2011. And the day I started, I asked myself, what's the best way to serve this community? Is it, is it by having the sheriff's department and a PD? Or is it, is it best served by having possibly one agency? When I started with the police department, I asked the same question. When I became the assistant chief, I asked the same question. When I became the chief, I asked the same question. If we look at 2023, within five miles of Dillon, how big is Beaverhead County's population? Do we have 80%? Do we have 75%? There's been a big growth in the last three years, last 20 years. You go down 91, you go up 91, you go up 41, you go up the black tail. There is a huge populace within the city limits, very close to the city limits of Dillon. How can we better serve those people as well as the city, the city of Dillon? It's always been on my mind. I don't know the answers of how to make it happen. But, um, if we could better serve our community, how, how can we do it to be more efficient? I'm all for it.
Did you say, uh, Tool County and then Powell County or Deer Lodge or did you say?
Yeah, Tool County and Shelby. They didn't, they set it up correctly. I guess back 30 years ago, paper says. But they've been doing it 30 years and they get along great. You know, the newspaper that they got, and the, uh, Deer Lodge and Powell County were in it for like 20 years. Then they broke up in 2012, I think. When they parted ways again and became a police department and a sheriff department. Now they're looking at, is it feasible to do it, you know, combined to begin? And if you, and if they do it right, because the MOU, more or less, I stroke a pen, one council meeting, we can vote that. Part ways again. And that's what they say, don't do it that way because it's not easy. More or less set up the public, Department of Public Safety. Then to disband that, you would have to take it to the public, the whole county, say, yes, we need to split ways. It makes it harder, once you get it all put together, it makes it harder to disband. So, I know that.
Counties have large prisons.
Yeah.
So I don't know if that has anything to do with anything.
There's another one up there, Scobie comes to mind, I can't remember. There's, sounds like a lot of the high lines are already doing this. Because they have the small, small populous counties.
It, it sounds like the city of Lima already contracts with Beaverhead County Sheriff's Department for their long force, you know, would that be any different for the city of Dillon?
You, you, we could do it that way, where we provide the county a check and then if the sheriff department didn't want a patrol here, they wouldn't have to, so.
I, I have a lot of questions. Does, does the, the city court, we maintain the city court at that point and what, what do we do? I don't know.
That's what, you know, I've read different questions in there, so I don't know. A lot of them, you know, one part of it says you can't disband the city court and the next one, turn it over, it says the city has to have a judge and so. Trying to read law books is not my forte.
I'll second, uh, Mr. Ham's motion.
If we need it, that's what it is, I kind of put it here, let's get it rolling down and do a lot of research.
I have a question.
Yes.
Um, David, how many officers do you have on in a day? Like, how many people do you schedule out in a day?
Usually just one, but we kind of doubled up on the weekends.
And then Jeremy, how many people do you have out in a day?
So we have one on day shift, uh, we'll have one on an afternoon shift and we have one on a graveyard shift right now. Um, on a Friday night, there's a good possibility we could have uh, three or four officers on at night. And, um, yeah, you could have three or four on at a night on a Saturday or Sunday. So a Friday or a Saturday.
If you guys were to combine, would that allow all of the officers, because like right now, if you're doubling up or whatever, is that, are you constricted because of like the zones, like you have to stay within the city, you have to stay within the county, kind of thing?
We don't have zones or anything because we're, you know, we're in Melrose or we're
Right, but the city's not.
The city's not.
Right, but if you guys combine this, that would allow the officers then to be able to spread out a little bit more and patrol areas like Lima and Flares and Jackson and all that and be more efficient? Okay, that's what I was just curious if you could hear.
And then my little question is for both you gentlemen. But that being said, would this not make it even a cool field? Anyways, sorry.
Can, can the sheriff's department assume all 10 officers with the current budget that the city of Dillon would provide to them? I don't know.
Because you got to get that aspect because the two officers are at the mill. You lose the mill. The two mills, actually, it's two mills.
It goes into that in the law books. There's one place that they don't have to be paid the same, another option they do. There's a lot of research, research.
I'm glad you brought that up for us because, yes, if we did combine, our two mills, they go away and we lose those two officers.
Correct.
Absolutely.
Correct.
You know, I don't know if everybody has looked into every option of this.
Right.
And, you know, are, is this, is this a premature thought or is it something that we need to look at to figure out the ins and outs of it? Because there's a lot of, a lot of pieces that need to fall into place for it to happen.
Correct.
Or, and when one of those pieces don't happen, it doesn't happen. Yeah.
Been mentioned to me that we need putting UMW into it. Because they say, you know, if you look at the population of Beaverhead County, it's 9,000 people. The population of the colleges, 1,100, you know, they're one-ninth of the population of our county. Nine months, nine, 10 months out of the year, so. We need, hey, you know, you have, can you start? Because they say other colleges have, I haven't been on college campus for a long time, so I don't know.
It sounds like our taxable revenue is approximately 26 million right now in the county. Um, with that solar project, it sounds like it might be a $5 million by the time they're done and a $5 million add. So we might be over the 30 million by the time they're completed with their project in the next year and a half. So that might push this, uh, Department of, uh, Safety, it might push it south if we're over the 31 million by now.
But that's what it is, I started looking at, you know, I don't know what the taxable value of Tool County, Powell County, you know, because they have big projects there too, so.
Call for the questions.
There's no action, we're just going to send it to, we're going to send it to the fire and order committee.
Here's the motion.
There's no action on it, we're just, information on it. And he said, we're going to send it to, or advised to send it to the commission or the What's that? That it was advised to
Fire and order.
Going to fire and order, so.
Mr. Ham, did you make a motion?
Yeah. Yeah. But can you make a motion when there's no action on?
There's an action, there's an item, no.
What's that?
There's an action.
Okay. It's been, made a motion to send it to the fire and order and seconded, so we'll take a vote. All in favor, send it to fire and order, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? Okay, we're going to go fire and order. Okay, next one was from our director of operations, the MSU local government center sent us information on their creation of website. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
See you guys. Just information on what they can do, I don't know all the ins and outs of it. I think Mr. Hazel Baker has more.
Currently, our website needs help. And this would allow us to update it and basically put down, uh, literally the first page. Uh, we provide the content on various things. And then some of the other information gets into, an overview is what they provide us, training, those type of things. And then, uh, there's also an example of a contract that we would sign if we were to go that direction. Sam Hubbard would be our administrator for the website. to go that direction. Sam Hubbard would be our administrator for the website. So I'm just throwing this information out to, for permission to start the process.
Well, the price to set up a website looks rightfully effective. We certainly do need better websites. At least one was watched all the time, and that'd be appropriate.
And Sam would be, that would be her responsibility.
Ultimately, the price I'm gonna have, assuming I'm gonna put this on, because you're overloaded as it is, so I can't see you putting it on your desk, all on a seat.
I appreciate that. Yes. Sam, I'm not very busy with Sam about it, if she would be interested in it.
I read through the proposal, and it looks like a terrific proposal, but what I didn't see in here was, I wondered if it would, it would provide lots of information for the public, and it would certainly be a far more friendly website to look at. Will it continue to hold? One of the best things that the website does right now is it archives agendas, minutes, and packets from previous meetings. Will it continue to archive those things?
Well, our website doesn't archive documents, our system does. Right now, it's what we put on it is what we put on it. So in this case, yeah, what we put on it is, and we would update it as documents came down through it.
So all of the documents that are located on the, that they aren't located on the website, they are, is actually a link to those documents. Those will continue to be on the website?
Yes, we might have one, yes.
Great. The other thing I was wondering is that, one of the things that people have asked for is, is there any way I can, you know, get my dog tags? Go to a website and simply get my, you know, pay my, use some kind of payment method, whether it's PayPal, Venmo, or some other Zelle? I mean, there's a whole bunch of different things. But be able to do some of the things that you would normally do by having to come into City Hall?
We, I'm not familiar enough with it to say yes to that, but I would hope that they'd be able to do that. Because one of the things that they do use for business is Squarespace, which I'm not familiar with.
I am. It's very similar to Wix, which, Wix was the platform that we used for our website, and Squarespace, and, well, there's a couple of others that you can use to design your own, any of us can use to design our own webpage. But those are not, those do not allow for commercial. They just allow for webpage design. They don't allow for commercial activity.
Are those just questions, I guess?
I think on page three, it says, online bill pay compatible. Many of the people choose a third-party online payment platform, so they.
Yeah.
Is that what the online address is?
Well, I was wondering what online platform, because that's where you, that's what really costs the money. So if, if we have to add an online platform, those are charged out, I mean, we used an online platform, two of them, and that was 250, 275 a month. I mean, that's where the money comes in. So I was just wondering if they allowed for commercial activity with this?
Well, that's a good question for a questioner. They have, the annual platform use fee is $276.
It appears that they do allow commercial activity on the square, about $61 a month, for everything listed here. We're all on the same page.
And who pays for the processing fee? Because we debated this with the water bills, pay online. Who eats, who absorbs?
And that would be your decision.
Okay, I'm just, I'm just gonna put the picture here, because this is just this part. When you guys wanna go electronic, I think you're nearsighted right now.
It does get a little scary when one of.
If you're gonna do it regularly, I wanna be able to do electronic payment for dog tags, I wanna do my water bill. If you're gonna do business license, I wanna do that, I wanna come in and be able to do my food cart. I wanna come in and see, I'd like to say, oh, look, here's my storage, here's my $35. Is it, who's paying for the processing fee, that credit card?
We'll also do fees or put on the.
So I think you're gonna look at the whole picture, and not just go in and say, we have a new website.
We add in, because that's what happens with PayPal, right? So $50, and it's like, we get, out of that $50, we get like $47. So what we do is, you add in a processing fee, and you have to figure out what that processing fee is, and you have to add that in, but still, like, you know, still they're gonna take some money, so you have to figure out exactly what that is, so that you do get your actual $50.
And that's why I'm throwing it out there, so it's not like the whole picture versus, well, gee, that $500 block fee is now $2,500 a year. Plus, the domain's not guaranteed. Plus, the email extensions, for all you people that get new tablets, and then we use them. Just saying.
I think Mr. Swan's comment is real relevant, that it's important to, instead of just looking at a webpage design, to set some goals of what you would like the webpage to achieve, and then look at those companies that provide, that could meet those goals.
I think this is great, you know, because we already know, okay, luckily we have the platform for backup storage. But I think when we look at the big picture, we have to truly go forward and say, okay, if I do a plan.
So I guess this part I'm asking, would you like any stuff, continue going forward, and what MSU Local Government Center can provide us, addressing your questions?
Yeah, I'll get information, and I'm sending this to the City Hall Committee to do further research on it. So get information for the City Council Committee. Oh, yes.
So just really quickly, in my time coming to these meetings, I have heard at least two different website developers mentioned in here. You've mentioned Yan Mark in this program before, and I've also heard Sitters Plus mentioned before. My question to you, as Director of Operations, why have you not actually explored both of those options, and why is only one coming before the council now? And I would ask that all of you, as a member of the City Hall, maybe we should look at options, and not just the short-sighted small price tag that may or may not work and be feasible going forward. I think that would be a better and more responsible way to spend our money.
Okay, one of the things is that MSU Local Government Center is a, to me, a trusted center. It's, it's constant, it's somebody that's always there. City Plus, yes, it has been discussed a little bit. You're looking probably over, the initial fee, probably close to $6,000.
Perfect. Did you actually call Sitters Plus, or like, price that up?
Yes.
For the city?
Yes.
And do you have that quote?
But when you add the add-ons that people want, they have, it gets up there. And I can provide that to the next meeting, if you'd like.
I think that that should just go before whatever committee does handle this. I think that that would be the best thing, instead of just presenting one side of it. If they're truly gonna make an informed decision for the community, I think that's the best route to go.
Well, that's fine.
So would you like a motion, Mr.?
Nope, we're sending it to City Hall, and Mr. Hazelbake will get information for it.
I think we have a motion.
No. Okay. Mayor's report, first order, appoint Ward Three council person. We have three people that applied. I know Bill Schaefer, I don't know who the other two are. Are you Stephen?
Yes.
Okay, Stephen's here, Lloyd is not here.
It looks like so.
So, more or less, I don't know how the council wants to approach them, if you want to have Mr. Seibert.
Yep.
Present something, and, or you just wanna go down and vote for the person you want right now.
I think coming courtesy of Mr. Seibert.
Okay. Up at the mic, please, and, you can, say your name.
Well, my name is Stephen Seibert. Went ahead and applied for this position at, upon notification that it was available, and upon request. I've lived in Dillon now for five years, since July 2017. I live out on 320 Madison Street. That would be Guy Turtles, Old House, right in the end of town, right next to Raymond, Raymond's property. I worked at the hospital for five years, and the first year I was here, as well as this year, they provided me with an award for excellence in service. I do IT service work there. The Service Award for Excellence is based on my peers' work there, and their reflection of the value of the service that I provide, and why I'm there. My background, as I noted in the letter that I gave you, about 20-plus years working for tribal government in South Dakota. You know, the two things I think you noted in the letter were service on the Boys and Girls Club Board there, as well as working with the Judicial Committee on a joint safety and courts grant for the tribe. While I was there, both worked from scratch, it was basically wireless, point-to-multi-point, served multiple departments with them, the tribe, including the tribal courts, tribal government, finance office, and the schools, and worked separately then for the casino. So wide variety of experience, and wide variety of areas. I have a bachelor's of science degree in elementary education, taught for two years, served in Coast Guard for a couple of years prior to going to work for tribal government. So what I bring to the table is a wide variety of experience, the background in the team, peers at my present place of employment, I highlight the work that I do for them. I guess, in serving on city council, the kind of stuff that I'd like to look at, then would be, I'm currently reading through a book called Strong Towns, I've watched several videos on that on YouTube, that talks a lot about development within cities over time, and planning within cities over time, and really stresses that strong cognitance on maintaining your cap space as you move forward in your development. And so with my enthusiasm, if you've read through that book, and watching those kind of videos, I think bringing that kind of enthusiasm then to possibly, or certain on city council. I guess that's about it.
Mr. Mayor, I would just like to give you a little background. I received a phone call, I mean, more than two years ago, from the head of the IT department at the hospital, and said he had a person who worked there, and who was interested in city council, and could they have some information. And I said, great. And Mr. Seibert, I had not known Mr. Seibert, but he's emailed me and asked me for like, the city charter, which I was thrilled to give him the city charter. And he's asked for a few other pieces of information. I guess I received another phone call from the administration, and they would, they were thrilled to, they wanted me to express to the city council how much they, how much they appreciated the city council, considering somebody from the hospital. He sent me a thing about the hospital, right now has 260 direct jobs that they have, and that they contribute close to $20 million to the community economy. And they wanted very much to, there's a new CEO at the hospital, and he, just as the new chancellor at the university, they want very much to partner with the city, and to become more involved with the city. And I thanked him profusely, and he would be here, except that they have little children. But I wanted to at least express that phone call to you. Excuse me?
No, I'm sorry.
Good. Mr. Hamm, you're the president of the council, and it's more or less you're filling the position for your council. How do you wanna go about, should we go through and take a vote on each one, or?
I was gonna say, are there any comments, pro or con about any of the applicants? Or anyone who wants to share with us?
I would share with you that Bill Schaefer has been a member of this board for eight-plus years, I believe, and he has experience, and he knows his way around the board and stuff, and I think that, I know the people in my ward who he represents have said that they would like to see Bill Schaefer back on there, and I guess I would hope that the council would put Bill Schaefer back on.
I'd like to make a comment too, is, I think that we should, I agree with what Raymond said, and I think that Dale brings a lot to the table, even though he may not run, or is not going to run, because this position, they have to run for the next election. And my theory is that, you know, appoint Dale Schaefer back in, and then let the voters decide who they want on city council when it comes time for the vote. If you're gonna run, you know, that's my thoughts on that.
So clarification, this term is for what to what?
This will fill in, who we appoint tonight will fill in till December 31st.
This year?
This year. But the term runs for two more years, so if whoever wants to replace him full-time, will have to run in the election, you know, will be a two-year term, like Mr. Johnson's just right now, he's finished in the last two terms.
So make application in June?
Yeah.
For the November?
Yes, so they'll have to.
And then it's just a two-year term?
Two-year term, yes.
I guess I wanted to understand, because usually I agree so much with Mr. Nye, explain to me, now, why is it better to have somebody who's not gonna, Bill has said in his letter that he didn't want to run. Why is it better to have somebody who's not gonna run for the position, fill it now, rather than somebody who said they're going to run for the?
They have not said that they are going to run. I'm just saying that we should let the voters decide for once who takes the seat the rest of the way. Bill is, like Raymond said, has already has the experience, and the things that we got going on, we got budget coming up again, and I think that's, we want somebody on that has some experience. I know from when I first started, it took a couple of years before I got comfortable as to what was going on, at least a couple of years. You know, and so, why not have somebody that's already got the experience on there, and then when it comes to vote, let the voters decide who they want?
So again, one more question, sorry. So with that being said, if it does go before the voters, and they vote, which obviously they have to, you know, if you're appointed, they take over January 1?
The first month, or whatever. Actually, the law says that they take over.
Right, we just ask for clarification.
Well, the actual law says that the person who's appointed, whoever runs, takes over that seat, takes over when they are actually approved, and so technically, they would actually take over in November after.
And so, technically, they would actually take over in November after, rather, end of November after the commissioners canvassed the voting. If you read the law, it actually says they take over when they're fully elected and qualified, which is actually when the vote is canvassed in November, December. So they actually don't take over in January. Traditionally, we wouldn't put January to settle, but the law actually reads that the department takes over on the qualified election of the replacement.
Yeah, I'd just like to make a comment. And I liked Mr. Shaffer up in front of this for eight years. But I would say Mr. Seibert is here. He came up, he showed up for this meeting. It says a lot to me. The other candidates aren't here. And I just wanna say that that may be a telltale sign of what's overdoing going forward.
But I think on fairness, folks, a lot of us have schedules. I know that Lloyd does work.
But I know Bill had a previous...
And I know we're the minority on this commission.
Any other comments from the council members? Hearing none, I believe it's time for the vote. I would suggest we do all three. Take the majority from that, take the talk two, do an additional vote to kind of shut, lower it down, lack of a better term.
Okay.
So we vote for one?
Vote for one.
Vote for one. And do a roll call vote?
Yes, please.
Yes, okay. Okay. Mr. Hand.
Shaffer.
Mr. Swan.
What did you say?
All right, you look, Stephen.
I'll go for Lloyd.
Shaffer.
Shaffer. Mr. Graham.
Bill Shaffer.
Mr. Johnston.
Uh, Seibert.
Ms. O'Rourke.
Uh, Seibert.
Okay, so it's one for Lloyd, two for Bill, and two for, three for Bill, and two for Stephen. So, Mr. Lloyd Westperson?
And then, just a quick question. Counselperson wasn't up here, but yet they sent a text. Because I forgot to file for a proxy vote. I would like to share that, now I did receive a text. I do have it, I can show it to you, Diana, Diana Armstrong, and she did, her vote was cast for Stephen.
I don't believe there's possibility for proxy votes.
I just wanted to share that, to know that I did follow through.
Yes. Yes, I have.
I just wanted to pass that, my turn.
Mary Jill, your campaign was very effective. I answered four or five different calls today.
So we'll do another roll call vote between...
I'm not sure what you're talking about.
Mr. Bill Shaffer and Mr. Stephen Seibert. Okay. Ward one, Mr. Hand.
Mr. Shaffer, please.
Mr. Swan.
Seibert.
Mr. Dan.
Shaffer, Shaffer.
Mr. Graham.
Bill Shaffer.
Mr. Johnston.
Uh, Seibert.
Ms. Ms. O'Rourke.
Mrs. O'Rourke.
Mrs. O'Rourke.
And I will vote for Seibert.
Okay, it's three to three.
We need a majority of five. Put somebody on, on the vote. So if you'd like, we can think about it a bit more and come back to it later in the meeting, or the table for this meeting, the next meeting, or have a special meeting to address it.
I guess could, uh, just to clarify something, I didn't understand. Mr. Seibert, do you plan on running for this office?
Yes.
Okay, I do. And I believe that Mr. Shaffer said that he was not going to run for the office, correct? Did I read his letter correctly?
I think he said, yeah, he said, he's not running.
No, he's not running, that's correct.
He's not running for the office. Maybe should we try again, one more time?
Let's have five.
We have to apply, we can't, but we're deadlocked right now.
Okay, so would the appropriate action be to delay it?
Again, for a certain amount of time, but not very long.
Because I guess the question I have is, was it posted on the dead review? Was there a deadline to the application?
Yes, deadline was due, uh, January 30th at 12 o'clock.
How, could we delay it to the next meeting?
That pushes us past the 30 days, so I think that's it.
I think we're good at next meeting.
Can we do the next, middle of the month meeting?
Middle of the month meeting, of course.
Okay, I guess we can do that, yeah.
So we can go to the next meeting? I'll make that motion that we delay this vote until the next meeting.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to table this meeting. We tell the next meeting, it'll be Mr. Seibert and Mr. Shaffer in running. Do we have a public comment?
Yeah, I think it's on the poll. Mr. Seibert, like I, like you all said, he did show up, so that's huge. And we understand that other ones have it, but tribal council is hard, just an FYI. I worked in Haver, and I had to go out to different reservations and work with two different reservations. I had Fort Valnhub and Rocky Boy, and I will tell you, he's probably been through a lot. So, I just have to throw that out there, when you said that you worked for tribal council. I know what it's like.
And I would just like to say thank you for all three candidates to put their hat in. I mean, Ward most of the, you know, Ward adjustments, Planning Board, and Zoning Board. Link's there.
I second, yeah, I would like to thank everyone.
There's been a motion on the floor.
Yep.
Second.
There's been motion already, seconded.
Call for the question.
All in favor of tabling this until the mid-month meeting, which we'll have to approve then. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. So...
And if they have anybody else who comes over, looking in the running at the middle. It would be a struggle over.
Yeah, it's a free call.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you for showing up. Sorry we picked to do something for you.
This is kind of like the tribal council's only worse.
Okay, next one, reappoint Raymond Graham to the zoning commission.
Move.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to reappoint Raymond Graham to the zoning commission.
Call for the question.
He can't go off.
Question?
Yeah. All in favor of reappointing Raymond Graham to the zoning commission, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Okay. Reappointed to the next zoning commission. Next one, appoint Larry Vulcanin as the county representative to the planning board.
We should approve.
Second. Been moved and seconded.
Was he on that once before?
Yes.
Yeah, it was about fifteen or so years ago, they said.
Yep.
Right now, he is the chair of the county planning board.
He was on, when I was on the planning board.
So is he gonna have authority to represent the county, or is he gonna be ignored like the last one?
Uh, I think he's, has the ear of the commissioners, it sounds like. When I visited with them.
After my last appearance at the planning board, county planning board.
Right now...
Things are changing, yeah.
They're definitely gonna make sure the city knows when their meetings are. So one of us can, myself and Mr. Azalay, we can get to...
And they're working to determine if they're, yeah.
No. We could, but then they're gonna have to appoint another person to keep it on number one.
I think it would be helpful if we had a representative on the board.
Next, planning meeting, are you going to, Mr. Azalay, or the next planning meeting, county?
What's the question?
About having a city representative on their board.
It has been brought up.
Several times.
But it has not been accepted by the county planning board, correct?
No.
They would have a joint task force.
But it has been...
From past people that tried, when I was on the planning board way back, that we had someone that was going to their meetings and they quit because they had no say at all.
And that's why we lost, Ms. Prosser. Call for the question.
Okay, question's been called for to appoint Mr. Larry Vulcanin to the county representative to the planning, city planning board. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Okay, Mr. Larry Vulcanin will be on our planning board.
Mr. Mayor, will we continue to work with the county to rewrite that ordinance so that there could be a city? That's the, that's all that's missing. Is, is right now, they, they have language that says who exactly will be on the county planning board, but they, it does not include a city representative. So, it, just those two words need to be added. So will we continue to work with the county?
We'll keep on asking them until they take it up and do it. We can't make them accept one, but we can keep encouraging them.
I think we have some, we're, we're kind of in negotiations with the county right now about improving communications between the city and the county. And so this, there is, this is like the ideal time. If we added that maybe to our city attorney's checklist of things that he's working on, this might be the ideal time to do that.
Might be a good idea.
You could ask him, but... We'll talk with Mr. Sky Jones and see if he wants to take on another project.
Well, this wouldn't be another project, it would just be part of it.
Okay. Move on to reports of officers of the Board of the City. Library Board, Mrs. Armstrong's gone, but I see our director is here.
I don't think I can make a motion for you guys to approve my minutes, can you? Can I? I can?
You can ask.
Second.
This is for December, because I don't know what happened to the November. I sent a November in for you guys to approve too, and they went on my list this time. So, just FYI, you might have November next month, but who knows? It'll eventually get in there. I didn't read this November. I don't know, because they were both sent in the same email. Oh, I didn't see, I didn't get that email. This, I think this just said December.
You are here this night.
Yeah.
Call for a question. Questions being called for to accept the minutes of the December 27th meeting of the library board. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Minutes been accepted unanimously.
Okay, so there's a couple of things happening at the library. Our boiler's on the fritz, by the way.
Did you not, you just paid a bunch of money for it?
Twenty, oh, yeah, we did. We have paid a lot of money in the last two years on this boiler. We have replaced the motor multiple times, all kinds of stuff. And that's why I'm here, is because I had a quote for a new boiler. It is $28,000 for the installation and everything for a new boiler. I did write, I've been talking with multiple people, so I'm hoping we can get this done. I have spoke with, and we're presenting at United Way for them to pay a third. I presented at the Friends of the Library, they've agreed to pay a third. The library does not have this in their fund. Our appreciation fund from last year was $26,000. I thought it was going to the building reserve fund, it didn't go to the building reserve fund. So, I am asking that maybe the city would be helpful in paying $9,599 to help for a third of the boiler. That would be great. The other thing I'm working on is our lift, because our lift has cost us a lot of money over the last few years as well. We can no longer get parts for the lift. The one thing about the lift is we have to be ADA compliant. And with our lift, we are not ADA compliant. So, our lift is...
What does the lift service?
What's that?
What does the lift service if the elevator doesn't?
We don't have an elevator, we have a lift. It's on a pulley system.
So the elevator is a lift?
What's that?
The elevator's a lift?
The elevator's a lift.
Okay.
Yeah, it's on a pulley system. $78,500 for a new lift to go in. That is just the lift to be, current one, to be taken out, the new, and the new one to go in. If they have to take off the frame of the door or something like that to get the pieces out and the other pieces in, we have to pay for a contractor and/or an electrician. Not really sure how that's gonna go. I'm trying to get more information on that. But I am currently, hopefully, I'm working on two grants to try to get that. But I'm, I, I can't, I, I'm trying. But we can't really, I mean, grants. You know, how long can we be non-compliant and continue? So, there's that. The other thing I'm working on, see, I went from little to biggest. The other thing I'm, maybe I should go on the other way. The other thing I'm working on is our windows, because our windows are from 1902. So they are 120 years old, and one month, by the way. And so, we, I had a contractor come down and look at those and send me a quote. And we are on the National Registry, there's a total of 33 windows that need to be replaced. And also the frames, because our frames, the wood is rotting. At this point, we have rotten wood. And we have this thick of ice in, in the library on the inside of the window. It's pretty impressive. So I've taken pictures and I'm sending that off with the grant. $224,000 for 33 windows. One thing that I would like to do is maybe if we could do a fundraiser or something like that, where people can adopt a window. Because if we could get a window adoption plan and put plaques with everybody's name on them, it would probably be a lot easier. The one thing that I'm running into is we have, we created a Friends of the Library, not a foundation, and not a Friends Foundation. So Friends can only hold $50,000, and that's it. And so, we talked to the Bicentennial Foundation to see if they would be able to help us as a foundation or things like that. But these are the things that are very significant within our library that we need help with. It would be great if somebody from the council could help us with this, help us with ADA, help us with, I mean, because this, something happens, we're city building. And so, just be aware that we are trying our hardest. And I'm writing five grants at this moment, right now, for this stuff. So that's, that's what's happening, the major significant things. We did get a Montana Historical Preservation Grant this last year. We sealed off the lower 18, 24 inches of the bottom of the library. So we no longer have water coming into the library, because our rock is actually a lava rock. It's ash. And so, it's very porous, and we were getting water in the library. We sealed that off, we no longer have water in the library, which is awesome. And as Dawn pointed out in June, it actually decreased our power bill. So what I'm asking is, I have to write my final report, and I need a citizen summary from somebody on the benefits of what we did. But nobody notices it but you guys. So if somebody would be willing to write me a paragraph or whatever, or a couple of you, that would be great, that I can send off with my final report to the state for that. We got new gutters, and then we sealed off fellow volunteers, which is great. So if one of you guys would be willing to do that, I would be grateful by the end of February. No takers?
I, of course, I will do it.
Oh, thank you.
Could you tell the council again how much the Montana Historical Preservation Grant was for?
We received from the Montana Historical Preservation was $11,447. It was great, it's been, it's actually been warmer in the library, honestly, because we don't have that coming in, and we don't have the...
The moisture coming in?
Yeah.
So Ms. Laurie, the line item for the $9,000, that'll be in the February minutes? Or is that gonna be a line item, or are you asking for that money now?
I don't, um, I'm asking if you guys would be able to help us commit to this. So we have two other entities that we can at least present at. I have to present at United Way and say, hey, we're only asking for a third. Would you guys please be able to help us? We've got these two other entities that are gonna be able to do it, and we can compile those and get in the boiler. I mean, at this point, what needs to be sealed, and it shut down last week and it leaked. And we have a bucket under there for this purpose. And it was cold in there. Um, we got it up and running again, but, I mean, how, they can't eat, they can't seal it until even this summer. So, I mean, we're looking at even more money this summer. We might as well just replace the whole system.
How about doing a bake day? I mean, that's between 12 and 14,000.
Uh, they have to approve us.
You can get that done.
I, I don't know that you can. But I did put in a grant application for that, so I was hoping, but it wasn't for this. It was actually for the shelves that we have coming from, or we're getting for the library. We need new shelving, so I did write the bake day sale for that. So hopefully we can allocate and be able to do this. Does that make sense? Yeah, I'd already put in that grant.
You put in that, so were you awarded a bake day?
No, not yet, we haven't heard anything, so...
By end of February is...
End of February?
End of February is when they said they would give that to us.
But you've already applied for a bake day for another purpose?
Yeah. Yeah, because they have already told us that they don't do break-in order stuff.
Laurie, considering the costs here, would you consider a different building?
Oh, they wouldn't let us put a sign up in front of the library on the light post that wasn't even in front of the library. You're not gonna get them to change it. Like, the public loves that library, National Registry, I mean...
Once again, if you can't afford it, maybe worth a lot to change buildings to a different building that's more usable to what, to what you need. You got over a quarter million dollars with the expenses right here. Close to $300,000. Yes, $300,000. You know, that's not too bad a building to build in Montana these days. You can do it for that. So that's why as well, you had a bid considered.
I did consider that when I first moved here, because I was super excited. At one point, I heard that the bank across the street was moving across town, that they had property out there only across town. So I was super excited about that, and I took that to our patrons, and they were like, they were completely against it. Um, some of my employees even said that they would rather stay in the library than move over to something that way. So, I mean, it's a possibility, I'm not saying no, we can ask again. We are working on a strategic plan, our strategic plan committee meets next week. So this is something that we can bring up and ask about our strategic planning. With that, we could get, there's grants for, you know, it's 75, 25. So we're looking at 225 for a million dollar building, right? So, I don't know, I, that's gonna be something, if people are listening, send your information to the council on whether you would like a new building or not. But I don't know that it's gonna, I'm not holding my breath.
Then have you asked the patrons that object so much to put up the money?
What's that?
Have you asked the patrons that object so much to live to put in up some money?
Um, we are, we have, people give us donations a lot, and we're working on that. We also have stuff coming up that, you know, I don't know, money sucks. Nobody worked for two years.
True.
So, getting money, it's kinda hard right now, and I understand that. But if somebody would help me with grants or help me try to figure this out, it would be great. Because I'm kind of overwhelmed with everything and trying to keep it running, like... I mean, we've got some bills going into effect too, that I'm heading up to lobby at the legislature on Tuesdays, so... We'll see how...
Really, you need to look at all the options.
Oh, yeah, totally.
At least we thought about it, we decided to throw it up for this reason.
Yeah, and I can come up with a, I can come up with a budget of what it's gonna cost to move everything. Because we're not just talking about new building, we have to transfer everything over and things like that, and I don't...
It's all part of the cost, you're right.
Yeah, so it's not gonna be, I mean, it's probably gonna be more, but we'll ask, we can ask. I mean, we're gonna put that out in our strategic planning, but then, don't...
Also, is there advantage to changing the type of heating in there?
Uh, we did look at that, actually. And, um, it is cheaper as a hot water boiler system than it would be to go to electricity because our windows are rotting out and we have holes. And so it would cost more to electric heat that building than use the hot water boiler.
Yes, but did you check gas?
Gas is probably just expensive right now.
No, it's considerably cheaper. We could for something like that. Uh, did you, did you look into by chance storm windows?
Uh, the storm windows for our building do not fit. We do have some storm windows, but the storm window doesn't fit the way that the building is built. And so the snow just goes in between the storm window and the regular window. And then when it melts, all that water comes into the library again. So the storm windows are not effective at all.
You need a donor.
If you don't, that's what I need. I would love that. And if people wanna don't, you know, like, the whole window thing, adopt the window. Anybody got, Kami? What's 224,000 divided by 33?
I don't know.
Got a phone?
Uh, 60.
Shoot.
How much?
No, it isn't 60.
I don't think it's 60. Thank you.
224?
Yeah, divided by 3, 33.
So it'd be 67, uh, 6,787?
6,787.
No.
Right?
67,000?
67,000?
224,000?
Yeah. Divided by 33.
Yeah, I'm sorry, 6,787.
$6,787 a window.
Per window?
Per window!
No.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Per window, $6,000 a window.
It's on the register.
Yeah, it's a store.
So you would get some money back after the fact.
What's that?
On taxes.
Does that have a lot to do with being on the federal register and the specs to make sure the...
It is part of it that we're on the federal register, but the other part of it is, we've got arches.
Yes.
And it's the arches and the framing that I think is the most, and cutting of those arched windows. So we have one, and we even tried to do a possibility on the very, very tall arch windows is putting the windows, like, they'll make it a square window because on the outside it'll still look arched. And they won't notice it on the inside, so leaving those square instead of arching them. Um, but there's, and then the doors, that's included, the doors as well, so... But yeah, there's, so that's not bad. $6,000 a window?
Laurie, were you able to get a couple bids on each one of these items? Or how did you write up these figures?
So, um, I called Dylan Glass, I called Birch, is it Birch Creek? What's his name?
Jared Payne.
Thank you, called Jared Payne. Um, I called Anderson Windows, I called Anderson Renewal, and they all sent me to Butte. So, everybody sent me to Butte. Uh, Mark Tripp came down from Butte with, um, Triple S Building Supply, and they measured all the windows and came up with a bid.
Are those wooden windows or...
Yes. They're wooden windows, and I actually did talk to them about the difference of making them look like they're wood, but the cheaper material, and they said that material will only last about 20 years, that we are better off to go with the custom wood, that it will last longer. And they can stain it to look like the original stuff.
Well, a lot of the cost is because there's custom windows, yes.
Correct.
That's because those big window companies, they have, when they make windows, they have patterns already set out, and they make those, but when you go to custom, ching, price goes up.
$6,700 isn't bad for a, I just think that was 80.
You wouldn't do that for your house, would you?
For my house? Oh, Lord, my house has like 20-foot windows, and I get really scared when birds fly, but we have them anti-reflecting in this special thing, because if we do break a window, we're looking at $10,000 a window for our house.
How about the rest of the windows?
At my house?
Are they worth 6,700 bucks a piece though?
This is a historic building, it's been around for 120 years, and I can guarantee you it'll be around for 120 more. I mean, this building, people use this building constantly. We are, um, we are the only building in town that provides early education, free public early education to children and early literacy. We have post-secondary classes. We have, um, I mean, we're, the education facility that we have, we have so many people coming in and out of that library, 120 a day. You know, y'all looking like I'm crazy, but there's 120 people that come in and out of that library a day. And so we are, and that's just for physical items. We have hotspots, we have iPads you can check out, we have Chromebooks you can check out. We are like an internet hub, because there's a lot of people that can't afford it after being off for two years. We have homeschoolers that come in and use our services constantly. We're in collaboration with so many different organizations that to get rid of the library, I think you're gonna have a fight on your hands.
I didn't say you're in the library. I said move it to more economically feasible.
And that's something that we can't, I mean, we have to ask the community that. I can't say yes or no, because I think that needs to be a community decision.
I agree with you, but you better have all the options lined up for me.
Well, we do, that's part of the strategic planning for this year. Everything is, they've laid out.
So back to the boiler?
Yes.
You're gonna bring that forward as a line item for the 9,000?
How do I do that?
We, I think, isn't it correct that we just, uh, you have that, all, all your estimates done, and you bring that to the finance committee beginning in May-ish? And, because they're going to be putting together a budget that will be July 1st on.
That would be lovely, but I'm hoping for something sooner than July 1st.
That's my main requirement, is it in the January minutes that you're asking us on line item?
Yes.
Good, thank you.
Where would that come from? Do you have an idea?
$9,599, I dropped it from 28,000.
Yeah.
Here was what?
I dropped it from 28,000.
Yeah, but I haven't seen it yet, so we have time to work on it.
Yeah.
So, should this be referred to the finance committee?
Nothing's come forward yet. That's what I'm saying, it has to come forward as a line item in the minutes, because it's a board, the board makes the recommendation. Yes, we paid $7,000 last month for the boiler.
Yeah. Literally, $7,000 last month for the boiler.
Like City Hall, they make a recommendation on line item, we'd like this money for tablets. It's no different than coming from the library.
Okay.
Those are what great activities are going at the library this month.
Yeah, this is the best part.
I know, right?
February, fly time, start at night, 6:00 PM. We're gonna do it for four weeks. Rick Knight comes in and he teaches people how to tally flies so that they can go fishing this summer. Um, we also do a casting class in the spring, so that'll be great, you can come and check it out. We all hang out in the park and cast in circles in the park.
Aren't the flies dormant this time of the year?
They are.
No, they're gonna catch snow snakes.
Snow snakes, that's exactly right. Um, we have a story stroll, so I don't know if you've heard about the story stroll. It is a collaboration between the college, the middle school, the elementary school, and the library. And we are in the throes of this story stroll, it is a lot of fun. Last week, we finished up our recordings, because it's all on audio, that's where the college comes in, is they put them all on QR codes, and they teach the eighth graders how to use QR codes. And so we got our recordings done, the little first graders are reading their little bits, speaking cute. And so we're working on that, that will be held at the Night of Excellence in April, and then it'll move to the library, hopefully this summer. Um, my goal is to get permanent signs that we can just replace the story stroll stuff. I spoke with the Friends of JCPark, and they said I had to talk to you. And I spoke with the YMCA, and they said I had to talk to you. And so I have meetings also with Barrett Hospital and the University of Montana Western in trying to get story stroll up there. We're hoping that we can have four different locations, it's literally a two-by, or a four-by-four. And then we put like a little plaque-type thing that we can switch out the stories, so they will constantly, constantly be switched out. So people can walk with their families if they're walking in one of these trails. That we can do that, I've talked to the Trails Coalition, they said we could use our little, their little part before the YMCA, and we have also talked about maybe putting some of the story stroll signs up on the B, up that way. But those are the other two that I'll be bringing to parks, and hopefully you guys, that we can talk about what it would take to put the story stroll sign at the YMCA, that kind of thing. Um, we're also doing a Japanese culture in western Montana, so that's coming, it's a lot of fun. We have people from all over the state and out of state that are going to be coming and presenting. We're going to have Samurai armor, and a presenter about the Samurai armor. It's going to be like a little passport thing, they'll come in the library, they'll get it. All the businesses in town are involved, I'm going around to each business, asking if they want to be involved. And we can have a presentation, we're open to do bonsai trees at Patagonia. Um, I need to go talk to Barefoot Gym about the dancing and music, food at the Elks, a tea party at African Oasis, a book author at the bookstore. So, it'll be a two-day event, you can come at any time. The middle school's gonna be doing presentations on Japanese culture and internment camps, so they will have that up. I'm in contact with Heart Mountain and the museum to get a really cool Japanese display there as well. So, it'll be a lot of fun, everybody can be involved. We're having our pie social, 3.14. So, put on your calendars that you're gonna order some pie, maybe we can sell enough pie that we can get a boiler. But, and then we have our, we have our sprinkling coming up in April as well, and that will be at the National Garden Monopoly. So, we actually sold and got rid of all of our books over Labor Day, so we've had to restart over. So there won't be as much of a collection out there this time, but we will still have vendors out there and still our books and other things.
I have boxes, Brittany, boxes. No cookbooks, school books, religious books. Okay.
So, that would be, um, that's really what's happening at the library. We're having a lot of fun, doing a lot of work. So, do you guys have any questions?
I see on your second page of your minutes here, bottom of the page, under new business, um, under future board meeting dates. The finance committee's always met on the last Thursday of the month, unless there's something else preemptive. So that, that date's always been fixed. Did you get together with the clerk and figure out when you need to have your expenses in so she can get them to us for the last Thursday?
So, when, when Janie was here, you guys always met the Thursday before the first board meeting, before the first city council meeting is what I was told, it was the Thursday before the first city council meeting. And so, that's how we, that's for the last five years, that's how we've been running our meetings. And then I found out that it was like you guys are meeting definitely on the fourth Thursday of the month. So our biggest concern was, like, the fourth Thursday of the month in February is the 24th, maybe? And so, not all of the bills will be in, and then we're worried about going...
It's the last Thursday of the month.
Right.
Which is maybe the 20-something. Oh, like, the last, usually.
And so, and then...
And that's been that way, that whole time.
So... I don't know, I've always, I've always done it, that's why we always had it the very last Tuesday of the month.
23rd.
Yeah, and so that was our concern, is like, what kind of, um, late fees are we gonna have waiting six weeks to pay some of these bills? Because that's what it's gonna take, because they may not get it into us in time. So that's why we've always met the last Tuesday of the month, because it was the Thursday before the council meeting, and that's why we met. So there's going to be some dates that we were looking at, that it's gonna be extremely early, and that's one of our concerns, like, June is early. And so we just didn't know what the, the fees would be. That's our concern.
Kami, how much, before the fourth Thursday, do you need them?
I just definitely, I look at the due dates to make sure that we're not... So I'm including the library bills in the bills that we have, that get paid early to not get late fees. Because there are bills that, those bills are usually the ones that are utilities, you know, phone. So, you used it, you got paid. It's not like I'm...
What's the lead time you want before the fourth Thursday for them to have their stuff to you?
It works great this month.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, once again, how, what's that lead time?
Couple days.
Okay, so let's shoot for at least two days before the last Thursday of the month.
You have a 48-hour notice to put in on your agenda regarding this. So if you're having a meeting on Thursday, it has to be here on Tuesday, that's the law.
Correct, so like in February, if you look at February... Correct. So like in February, if you look at February, February, the last Tuesday of the month would be the twenty-eighth of February. And so we, we always had it at the last Tuesday, then, then, uh, what, finance met, and then the next week was the city council meeting. And so, um, but now we're moving into the twenty-first. So we're losing all of that time, and that was the concern. It's because we're losing that, and then it goes, and then it takes, so it's taking longer for those bills. Cause normally I can, if it's on the twenty-eighth, I can get my bills on the twenty-fifth, and those ones that come like Lee's Office apply is now Kelly connect. And so.
But I wonder where we're gonna have a meeting in February after you.
Because we moved ours to the twenty-first.
I know, but you know what I'm saying?
Well, it was the first, it was the Thursday before city council is what it was so that you guys could get the bills and then the city council could approve them. So it was the Thursday before the first city council meeting for the next month.
I don't know. I figured out here too.
It hasn't changed.
That's how it always was when, when the last administration was here. And so when you guys took over and then you were behind, and so that's why I was just, I just questioned, Diane asked, because that was our question is.
It's still the last.
What are we gonna do for the late fees?
It's always been that way, last Thursday of the month.
So if you meet on the last Tuesday of the month, are you able to get to Kami on that same day your bills?
Oh, she hasn't before then, because I put them in before then, but the problem is that the finance committee cannot look at them and they cannot come to city council for approval. That's the problem. And so if we meet on the twenty-eighth, so we've had to move it up to the twenty-first this month. There's, there's like three or four months within the year that this happens. So we just need to know what we can tell our vendors and make sure that we're not getting those late fees. Because paying those late fees is hard. Like the credit card and stuff, they still have late fees, and that, and it's so, that's the problem.
I, I mean.
I'd say, get it to me as soon as possible and we'll just pay it. It's gotta be paid.
The easy thing too would just be to meet three days before the finance committee meets. That's the easy way to do it. And it doesn't matter what day of the month that showed, I mean, that to me is like.
In February, it's the twenty-first. They meet on the twenty-third. Normally, we would meet on the twenty-eighth so that all of our bills could come in. We are meeting before the finance committee meeting because that's what we need to do, but I was just asking because it had changed at one point. So that's why I was curious.
Is it possible for that three or four times a year that this happens, uh, that you are able to get a list of what, though, just turn in a list of this is what the bill is gonna be to the credit card, we're gonna owe eighteen-hundred dollars to, you know, the office supply company, we're gonna owe whatever, even before you receive the paper bill, just get a list.
I don't know what they are until we get the paper bill. I mean, I, I know for like our, our power bill and for our phone bill and stuff like that, but I don't know for the office supply, then they'll order that one.
I think it comes fairly early as well.
The issue wasn't available because Thanksgiving fell last Thursday this year. That's where it caught up, and we're back on again this month.
So.
As long as you got something that works, I don't care.
It's good.
Just on a weird month, we'll just figure it out. We'll get together and figure it out.
Okay, that works. And that's all that my doorhead asks, is what are we gonna do if we have to meet early like this month? It's weird.
We'll find another.
It sounds great.
Okay.
Do you guys have any other questions? You guys have a good night.
Thank you.
Thanks, Laurie.
Moving on, attorney, he's babysitting, I think. Planning board, Mr. Hammond.
Uh, in your package, you find there are no minutes in the last meeting, and we haven't had a meeting since. Our meeting on Thursday nights been canceled, thus I had no report.
Zoning commission, emery Graham, Russell.
Mr. Grant, so I had your session this week.
I'm gonna go make sure all of these are on the agenda again.
Okay, it looks like we have three minutes on November first, November ninth, and January tenth of twenty-twenty-three.
Move to approve.
Snatch out. Then moved in second to accept the minutes of the zoning commission for November first, November ninth, and January tenth.
Okay, on January tenth, second page, under item H, review and discussion of fees. Please be advised that the zoning commission has no authority to raise or modify fees.
Correct.
We know that. We're recommending these to the council.
Okay, the minutes don't read that way.
Okay, well. So long as you're, we're, we're. Raymond moved to recommend adding the lines to the zoning compliance agreement commercial, but they're all going forward to council, and I thought I directed, I thought I.
You did. So at this meeting, Todd took them back, edited them, brought them back with the minutes that are not included in this packet, which was then he made the motion to move forward with the recommendation. So the minutes that are not in this packet yet is where, that meeting is where it was moved forward.
Yeah.
No, we don't, we had to straighten that. Sorry about that.
Question been called for to accept the minutes of the zoning commission for November first, November ninth, and January tenth. All in favor say aye. All opposed, same sign. The zoning commission minutes been accepted.
In the shape, we've been approving some new houses, so hopefully this next summer we'll have some new houses coming on there. We have been discussing the college friends thing, and we're gonna have sector where they can set, and I'm assuming we're all on for the joint meeting with the planning board on the street. Now we on, uh, February twenty-second?
First.
Twenty-first. Excuse me, and we're on seven minutes now. Anyway, um, we have been discussing zoning. I think we're gonna start the zoning process back up west of town. There is our next adventure. I guess that really covers everything we've been doing, just been keeping busy. If you have any questions, I'll try to answer them.
No questions?
This concludes my report, thank you.
We'll move on to the board of adjustments. Mayor Joe O'Rourke.
Are those minutes in there?
No.
Yeah. And don't get me wrong.
Hey, director of operations, Mr. Hazelbaker.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, just because of the weather, we've had a lot of snow removal, uh, issues going on. Uh, I'd like to take account for their help and supplying some, uh, special sand to help with the streets. Uh, county's always been very helpful with that, so a big thank you to them. Uh, with the warmer weather coming, we're on high alert for the water lines. This is usually a time to get the frozen lines, and then, uh, warm weather tends to seem to break them, so we're kind of holding our breath. That does not happen this time around. Uh, you probably noticed the Christmas lights are still up. Uh, our lift, well, you can say our lift truck, the university's lift truck is in a shop. And once we get that, and it should be done within the next couple of weeks, we'll get the Christmas lights down. Uh, I don't really have anything specific, but we, we will be interviewing, uh, the cemetery position, uh, Monday, and hopefully have somebody hired, uh, Monday or Tuesday. And then also I put out an advertisement today, starting the advertising for the park and animal control position. And hopefully have somebody hired. Well, it's open until field, starting open until, uh, by the end of the month. That'd be happy to answer any questions.
Uh, Mr. Hazelbaker, are you advertising outside of Dillon or the park's position?
As of now, it's just in the Dillon night paper and on the Montana league and city of towns. Uh, no, there was talk about possibly out of town, but the situation there, is there, are you willing to give me permission to spend over five hundred dollars to get advertisements in the Buick paper and the Bozen paper?
Um, so you've received, uh, estimates from the Buick and Bozen paper?
I talked to them, and that's what they told me that it would cost approximately.
But you're not putting on Facebook, yeah?
No, I have not put on Facebook, and no, I will not put on Facebook.
Okay.
Unless directed by the council. But yeah, I'd like to advertise out of town, but to, we wanna spend that amount of money to.
I, I believe, um, and Mr. Reagan is here, so boy, that's, he could really help us. I believe that, um, when I advertised with the Tribune, if I paid an extra fee, it went to all of the newspapers owned by, and back then the Tribune was owned by Bleak, correct?
Yeah, we're owned by a group called Yellowstone Group. It recently got sold to a new group. It's the same number of papers, it's eight papers per month, just pay.
Okay, and so, and when you're advertising one, if you pay that extra fee, it'll goes out to all the other papers?
Yes, it would.
Um, and I believe that fee was, I mean, it was under fifty bucks. I mean, I think it was like twenty-five bucks or twenty bucks or something. It was very, yeah, very, very reasonable.
For two weeks, for two weeks every day? Yeah, no, I'd be happy to do that.
The nice thing about advertising weekly is people read their weekly papers around for a week. Advertising daily, it comes in.
But you indicated Bozen, and they're not part of the Bozen group, they're not part of the Montana state.
Well, we actually are now.
Are you?
Yeah.
We are, we're part of our group. Well, we're in Livingston, Marston, Springs, Lewis Town, lots of places.
So I wish you'd charge charity.
For what? We were charging ten dollars for help wanted ads when we were doing it. When we reached like from one side of the United States to the other, plus, uh, Ireland, England, Russia.
You don't do help wanted ads anymore?
With people on a place, and we do.
Okay, so I guess, I'm happy to advertise out of town. Uh, is it okay, whatever the cost is?
Well.
And then take it out of.
Be reasonable and prudent, but that, I mean, you have two examples there that sound really good. Going through the Yellowstone group and also, uh, with our local Southwest Montana news. I mean, I think it's a great idea.
So, no, that's fine.
Very cost-effective.
The sand and gravel that you put out on the streets, has that got that added to, as if they were talking about? On the street.
It's a type of sand.
That ice slicer, that ice slicer. The county said we could have limited quantity.
I already mentioned about this.
It's gonna be a good time to dry it out.
Oh, good. It's just.
It'll melt everything faster.
Do, great.
Isn't?
So then we're looking at next year in the budget, budgeting so we have our own.
Little pile.
Our own little pile, yeah. All work, great.
The highway department was using that too. And I went to Buick this morning, we had black ice most of the way up starting to feel the hill. When we came back, the roads were dry. So it's pretty decent stuff, it was only twenty-seven degrees.
Any other questions for our director? Let's move on to the police department. Chief Alvarez.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, thank you, Council. Um, I do not have a report for last month for January. I just gave you guys a little quick update. Um, Chris Feathers has been at the academy for approximately one month. Um, um, we did lose Officer Kate Derry last month. There is another opening with Beaverton County Sheriff's Department. Um, a couple of our officers have applied. There's a good chance we may lose another one. Um, Officer Josh Geary starts tonight, and, uh, super excited to have him on board. He's full of huge smiles. We have, uh, we have three officers, including Assistant Chief, um, out of training right now for the last three days, and, uh, it's been a free training, and it's in Madison County. So it's very nice. We don't have to pay for lodging, and they're able to, uh, travel to and from and come back. And, um, you know, just super busy with, uh, with having, uh, another new guy on board to get up, up and training and going. Um, but, uh, I wanted to share something with you guys. We got, we got Valentine's Day coming up. It's a day that the, uh, you guys should never forget for your spouses, your loved ones, but the Dillon Police Department will never forget that day. We're gonna be so, remembering forty-two years ago that we had hand of watch for Dillon Police Department. Stephen Carl Schaefer was a patrolman for eight years with the Dillon PD who was struck and killed by a drunk driver during a traffic stop. So, um, it's something that we should never forget, and officers will be remembering, uh, Mr. Sh, Officer Schaefer by wearing, um, stripes over our badge that day for him. The suspect was apprehended, uh, served forty years, so he's out on the streets. Um, it's, it's, uh, I don't know if it's, it's, you know, that's part of our legal system, but, you know, it's a good possibility Mr. Schaefer can still be alive today. But, uh, just something we should never forget. So, but, uh, I would love to open it up for questions and, and answer anything for you guys.
So a question for you.
Chief?
Yes.
Looking at the budget, looking at things where I'm hearing rumors, uh, pay increase. I, I don't know where it falls with the union and where it falls with benefits. So let's say I apply, and I'm independent, single, and I really don't want the insurance. Is there some way down the road that I can say, hey, guess what, it costs three thousand for that insurance package, that deal? Can I apply that to my salary rather than take the benefit of it? Is that something that anyone's even looked into? Have you brought that before firing order, before finance, before the union? I'm, I'm just trying to come up with some creative ways to resolve some concerns that I'm hearing on the street that I don't think anyone's looking at.
That is a great question, and, and I don't have the HR answer for that. Yeah, I don't, I don't know the feasibility of that.
Just food for fire.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you.
Um, other employees, certainly as far as the police union, I'm not sure. The logistics of that, I would have to look into that quite a bit, see if that would work. But other employees are definitely, it's an option, sort of.
And I'm just trying to think of, working with in a current budget, rather than saying, hey, hand out, it's like going, bring your shit.
The problem is with that is the insurance benefits does not come out of the general fund. The insurance benefit comes out of permissive level.
But I'm just saying going forward.
Well, it's a sense.
There's no way to change that. If you give them the three thousand dollars, it's still coming out of the general fund. It's not saving the general fund.
It's not the general fund, actually, it's, um.
The pay is out of the general. The pay is out of the general fund. The insurance benefit is out of the permissive level. Yeah. So it's two different things. One will not, and we tax, get taxes back for insurance.
I just thought.
No, no, we, we brought that up before.
The only way that would work is if it's an enterprise fund, if it's water and sewer or something like that, maybe.
I don't think you can.
Cause that's not tax-free.
Right, the water and sewer fund pays for the only.
I, I guess, I have a question in regards to CIP money. Um, it's not only rumored, but it's confirmed. The county got twenty-four million in CIP money. How much did Dillon get? Because I was a little jealous when SO was buying six new patrol cars, and, and we get one, one every other year. Not not every year, but they went down and bought six brand-new ones. And so when we walk down the hallway and we see that they're needing six brand-new patrol cars, the officers see that, the deputies see that, and the officers are like, hey, why does that happen?
We got that from a CIP grant?
I believe so.
That would be an improper use of funds.
And I, this is just what I'm being told, so I don't, I, I've never seen it on paper, but.
Yeah, CIP funds have to be, is on C, CIP alone, and the access has to be repented. So I believe you've probably been disinformed. I don't doubt they got the money, but I don't make it clear from there.
They might be, they might be spending ARPA money to build or something on.
And maybe they got the, maybe they got twenty-four million in ARPA. I just heard that they got twenty-four million and, you know, they're talking about buying brand-new vests that are like rifle-proof, and I'm like, they're like, hey, you wanna buy, get in on this? And I'm like, I don't have no money for that. You guys wanna buy some for us?
Well, they could. I mean, you know, if you think about it, the citizens of Dillon are citizens of Beaverton County too. We pay the sheriff's fees just the same as county. We pay the sheriff's fees, just the same as county people. The citizens of Dillon are citizens of Beaverhead County. So they could share with the other citizens who are, you know, our officers. Sometimes I think we all forget that, that we're all in one big fish tank here. I mean, the city of Dillon is a little thing inside this big fish tank, but the city of Dillon participates in everything the county does.
You, you might have stronger muscles to twist their arm against the money.
I don't, I don't. But I'm just saying that, you know, when people talk about the county gives this and county gives that, the county is part of the city, and the city is part of the county. We pay taxes, I mean, I can bring my tax notice in, I get a tax for the city, I actually get, or for the county, I actually get a separate taxpayer for the city on the same piece of ground.
Chief Alvarez, is it possible for you to sit down with the sheriff and find out how the new patrol cars were funded and how the new vests would be funded? If it is through state or federal grants, that might be something that the city could help with.
The city could help with, or the county could help with?
Well, if they're grants, maybe the city...
If they're grants, yeah, the city can help.
Yeah, I don't...
Absolutely, I'd sit down and ask them.
Those are always possible, yeah.
Anything else for our chief?
We, we did apply for a forty-eight hundred dollar grant for four new vests, and we, we did that through the Mason Moore Love, Love Project. And so I, I wrote the grant, requested it, and we'll find out here, uh, March twenty-third. So attempting to try to regulate some funds and get some help, yeah.
Very good. Okay. Our chief, Closey.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, there is nothing in the agenda for tonight for me, but if anybody's got questions.
Thank you for sitting here. Okay, our city court, Judge Karen Meyer.
Welcome, everybody. Uh, we have a January report in my hands, it did not make your packet, so I apologize for that, but know that it's very, very short this coming month. It's only eleven pages, counsel person hand. Um, but it's important because I know that you guys have diligently been tracking our staffs, just as I have for these past few years. And, um, so yeah, we'll have it all here, and January was a pretty slow month. But I wish Officer Plotner was here, because until January thirtieth, we had nine cases, which is not very many, right, nine new cases. Officer Plotner, single handling, delivered a stack of parking tickets about two inches thick. So he got us up to twenty-two cases. Anyway, no, I think it's great, you know, he's out and about, he's looking around, and I'm not saying that your officer's not Chief Alvarez, but it was just kind of funny, because every single one I answered him was Plotner, Plotner, Plotner. So thank you, thank you to everything that your officers are sending our way. And, um, any questions?
So would that come in our next packet?
Yes, ma'am. It is ready to go, I checked on one typo, so I'm really glad I didn't actually submit it on time. Um, you will have it for your consideration and hopefully for your approval for next meeting, which is the seventh-ish? Thereabouts. Regardless, next meeting, so I know you'll be eagerly anticipating it. Any other questions? Okay, well, I'm just gonna end with a really heartfelt, ah, grateful thank you to everybody who voted for me in the past and for my election and reelection, and everybody who's supported me and entrusted the stewardship of the Dillon City Court to me since November of twenty-seventeen. And I've taken this court from a very fragile state to a clean, efficient, professional operation that it is today, and it's a labor of love, of pure determination sometimes. But we can't forget the excellent clerks and colleagues of the city who were critical in some of these successes. So I humbly, humbly thank all of those people that I've gotten to work with over these years. Um, I serve the citizens of Dillon, the citizens of Beaverhead County, all of our many travelers who came through this town, and I am so excited and thankful for that experience. My personal and professional growth and deeper understanding of the immense importance of the fair and lawful application of the law in people's daily lives is going to be treasured as I simply pause my service, it's a pause. I'm coming back, I'm not really going anywhere, I still live two blocks away, so I'm just pausing my service, um, my service to the citizens of Dillon and to the citizens of Beaverhead County. And I'm gonna resume the practice of law in southwestern Montana. So just a parting thought for everybody is that I really hope that you all remember to appreciate, embrace, and honestly support anyone who volunteers and stands up to serve and protect your freedoms. Anyone. No matter their gender, the years of experience that one may have, whether that service is local or it's overseas, this community and the governing body should stand solidly behind anyone who stands up to serve. Thank you.
You're welcome. You're resigning?
Yes, ma'am. Out of an abundance of love and care, it's nothing personal, it's nothing professional. I just had an opportunity, and it's better for my family.
Well, on behalf of the commission, thank you for your service, as well as the people from the military as well. That means a lot coming from the military family, so much respect, so thank you for that.
Well, thank you, and I'm gonna say that, um, that was been on my mind, that has been on my mind since Josh, Eric.
Yes.
Aheiri, wrong pronunciation, wrong emphasis, emphasis on the wrong syllable, there we go. Um, since he stood up, and he was peppered with questions about his commitment to serve, and I sat in the audience that day, and this wonderful citizen was right there next to me, and I was going, oh! Every time he got hit with a question, I was like, wanted to say, stop it, he's a young man. Um, and it just kind of felt a little tense at that time, and I just wanted to put it out there, leave you guys with that parting thought, that we are a great community, let's show everybody our love and support.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Okay, our treasurer, Karen Kipps, not here tonight, no report. Treeboy, Mayor Joe O'Rourke.
Um, we don't have any minutes in here, so, um, we meet next week, um, and you'll have minutes in your next packet. I think you actually approved, or we approved, you had minutes from the last month's meeting in the last packet. We're kind of getting a little speedy.
Reports of standing committees of the city council, Judiciary Committee, Dan Nei.
Uh, before you, you have the minutes for January seventeenth, ask for your approval.
Live to approve.
Seconded. Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes of Judiciary Committee.
As you can see, we're, uh, still working on meals and wheels. We're supposedly supposed to get more information for our next meeting.
Okay, Ken, just a reminder, the Meals on Wheels program is not, it's not a city program. It's under, it's under BASS, Beaverhead allied senior citizens. Our part as a city is, uh, we provide the car and the delivery. At this point, we're just helping them with their contract with the, with the, try to find somebody to provide a food service.
Anyways, it was left that we would have more information at the next meeting. We get a, just a reminder that we're working on, so...
As far as the meal cost, those, that's really not our, is that correct?
Correct.
Look, Dan, just took a step off your plate.
Well, there was some interesting discussions going on.
Uh, for the questions.
Questions been called for to approve the minutes of Judiciary Committee for January seventeenth. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the same sign. Okay, the minutes been approved unanimously. Our next meetings, always the Tuesday before our next council meetings.
So it would be, uh...
Thirteenth.
Thirteen, right?
Okay, Finance Committee, on hand. Okay, in your package, you'll find a budget report for January, a fund summary for claims for January, claims by vendor report for January, and a budget versus actual report for January twenty-twenty-three. I ask for your acceptance and approval.
Will you approve?
It's been moved and seconded to approve the reports from the Finance Committee.
Does that include?
The minutes.
The minutes?
Oh, yeah, sorry, I forgot the minutes. Did a bit.
Come on, I spent so much time on these.
I know. Probably not, our finance committee should check. I did, I did.
Have we got the final payment submitted for the...
Uh, yeah, they're still working on it.
Call for the question.
Well, could I just ask one more question? I was trying to find it in here, uh, and I don't know how to, is it Kruer? Like, there's a K-R-U-E-R, um, and, is, I mean, it looked kind of significant, isn't it? The thirty-seven sixty-five twenty?
Thirty-five hundred.
Yeah, thirty-five hundred. Are, do we, have we contracted with a law firm?
You guys approved the original payment, and you approved the additional, which I asked for, for Stephanie to do contract for. On a case that...
Multiple cases that was a conflict of interest from our department?
That was last year. Well, this was chief from, uh, Sheraton Drive.
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
Oh, okay, okay, right. I'm sorry, I just forgot that.
Questions been called for to accept the budgets of the Finance Committee and the approval of the minutes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the same sign. Motion to approve the minutes carried unanimously.
Okay, complete my report.
Fire and Order Committee, Mr. George Johnston.
Uh, I would ask to approve the minutes of, uh, January twenty-third, twenty-twenty-three.
Live to approve.
Been moved and seconded to approve the minutes of Fire and Order Committee.
On this report, I find it a little troubling in that they're keep being called council, they're not committee. When the council members are going to this committee, they're, they're committee members. They should not be addressed to you as a councilman, not members. They appear, when they're reported this way, that it's a council meeting. It's not, it's a committee meeting. Like, there's an error there that needs to be corrected with the second, when the next meeting comes.
Uh, is this on, Mr. Hand, is this on all of the committee reports, or just this one?
Just this one, the only one that showed, you know... Four, six pages of it.
I thank you for pointing that out, uh, Mr. Hand, and, you know, when, when I read this report, and, uh, the one that took the, the minutes, I think, was maybe, uh, Greider, was a, a new member, you know, and I'm sure that is something that she, she wasn't aware of.
That's what I'm hoping for, but I would like that corrected before the adjournment.
Other than that, I thought she took excellent...
You wanted to say what, council person?
No, take the council out and take committee.
Oh. All right, thanks, Jim.
Otherwise, yes, you did a very nice job of recording what all went on.
And, uh, you know, a lot of the discussion at that meeting, what we entail in this report, are abandoned vehicles, an abandoned vehicle on the state right away is just a forty-eight hour situation. And I, I'm not trying to be the, or, uh, the committee, I don't think is trying to be the Nazis, the parking Nazis, but, uh, some of the vehicles have been out there a long time, and some of the parking tickets, uh, you know, probably in that bundle that, say, you've got, are from those, uh, vehicles. And I'd also like to, uh, thank, uh, Chief Alvarez. One of the, uh, parking things was this, uh, blue rubber raft that was parked on the, uh, street there, uh, on, uh, Atlantic for months. And it was kind of half-deflated with cold weather, and, uh, and he talked to the individual who owns the raft, and it's no longer there, so I think it makes our city look a little nicer. I'll call for the questions.
Okay, questions been called for to approve the minutes of Fire and Order Committee. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the same sign. The minutes have been adopted unanimously, approved unanimously.
As amended, however.
As amended.
As amended.
Okay, the Health and Welfare Committee, Mayor Joe O'Rourke.
Before you are the minutes to our January nineteenth meeting, uh, we will stipulate that we'll correct it from council member to committee member on this, and we'll, uh, exchange those words.
Live to approve as amended.
Been moved, then, seconded, to approve the minutes of the Health and Welfare Committee as amended.
Is the sitting there, this quarterly report supposed to be part of this minutes, Jim? I, I didn't get a set of them, that's what I was wondering, but they're referencing.
Yeah, usually, if you do have it as part of the report, I'm not sure why it didn't come through, I'm not sure.
It didn't make it in the fact of on the email, not either.
The what?
It didn't make it in that, on the email, the fact of that.
Usually, uh, included with this is the quarterly report.
I'm so many way down here.
Oh, right.
So maybe we'll include, uh, next quarter, we'll include both of them. Uh, we'll put that in our brains, okay?
Uh, it should actually be added to these that they're talking about.
That's true.
Do you want to carry this over to next time?
Well, let's do that, we can get...
Try to then resubmit.
What's the report?
Well, I'm sorry, what was that?
What's that?
I heard...
So that's tabled?
Yes.
So we'll resubmit these minutes next meeting with the quarterly report. Any other questions for Health and Welfare? Move on to the Cemetery Committee, George Johnston.
Uh, no meeting, no report, uh, the next meeting will, should be on the thirteenth.
Parks Committee, Mayor Joe O'Rourke.
Yes, before you is the, uh, minutes from the January twenty-fifth meeting. For your approval.
Live to approve as amended, with the work council taking note.
Thank you, O'Rourke. Been moved, then, seconded, anyone?
They're all seconded.
Had been moved and seconded to approve the minutes of the Parks Committee for January twenty-fifth.
As amended.
As amended.
So...
And again, if it says included in this packet, is the budget and stuff and it's not in the packet? Yeah, if it's written and say they're included, they really should be included.
That's a very long, that was a very, okay. Why don't we table these and we'll include the next hundred pages with it?
Great, what?
They want the budget, all the budget reports that were part of the Parks Committee packet to be included with this.
Mayor Joe, it says in the minutes, included in the packet. If it says it's included in the packet, they damn well better be in the packet.
It was included in our Parks packet.
Yes.
Right?
They want.
But it's in the minutes. If it's in the minutes, it has to be here.
Okay. I don't know what they're doing with you, but it's known, right?
What's that?
I don't.
No, no.
We'll get it fixed.
We'll get it fixed.
No, you're saying that.
I'm gonna sign when you laugh about it, though.
Yeah, I can't.
And you want, that's why you want to resubmit those.
Yes, Parks Committee minutes will be resubmitted with the budget. Any other information from Parks?
No.
Okay. City Hall Committee, Remy Graham.
No minutes, no meeting, no report. We'll have a meeting, no, we'll discuss the new internet designer, webpage designer, or A-Webpage designer on the Thursday, whenever that makes sense. I'll include my report.
Street Alley Committee, Don Hand.
Uh, no meeting, he's been dead for a while. Um, no meeting, no report. We will have a meeting on Monday.
I asked to be excused.
Okay. I don't want to top five. Okay, Water and Sewer Committee, Don Hand.
No meeting, no report.
And last item, public comment of violation of significant public interest, not on the agenda, but within the jurisdiction of the city. Seeing none.
I have a clarifying question. Um, on our finance report, we refer to, uh, council person, hand, and we also, uh, refer to the claims. So shouldn't this report, uh?
Most of the committee, most of the committee minutes say council person, even if it's a committee, they say, they all say council person hand, you're council people.
Yeah.
So it's true, we're not acting as council people during those meetings.
Sure, always, always council people.
Right, it's committee numbers.
That's the way that we all learn, that's how Stacy did it, that's how Diane did it, that's how Jamie did it, that's how it's always been council person, everyone, except this one.
Don't look at me, that's not how I do it.
Except that one.
Our secretary.
So Raymond, we all get our information together and do what, City Hall, right?
Yes.
So when we do our structure of the minutes, we can include that with that too and come to a consensus about what? Do you want to do that?
Because if you're not having a council meeting, we do the.
Right, committee member.
We have on your report, council person.
That ought to be corrected as well.
It should be corrected. And also the drafts, I, it calls, it refers to the drafts. So the drafts should be, uh, part of the report.
I've got to get tablets to say paper.
Yeah.
It, it refers to it.
But are they not included in the reports?
There are, there are.
So they say it's included in the packet or do they talk about it?
Discussed and signed with claims.
One thing you have to remember, Mayor Joe, any kind of paperwork you deal with, the amount that you're doing in a committee member, if you're going into council, all paperwork are a public document and should be.
So the claim should be part of this.
If you pass out a public document at any kind of meeting you're at, they should be included in your package.
You are a pile of this.
I know, I agree.
Mayor Joe, they're actually there in the past sheets, the finance sheets, they're all recorded right in there.
Right, by claims, by vendor. Uh, that, that is correct. Um, but if you are going to require, uh, from other committees that all documents be included in the packet, then Diane would better have the finance committee include all their documents.
Well, the originals aren't there, you're right.
The originals need to be there. They, they need to be there. The originals need to be there.
If you're like, say, you can, if you'll get a separate paper every month, that'd be.
That's great, that's great.
I don't know, we turn them on once a.
Yeah, that's great. I, I think it's ludicrous.
Okay.
But that's what you're requiring another committee, so your committee needs to do the same.
Whenever we get a case of Tyler here.
Okay. Any other comments?
Move to adjourn.
Been moved?
Seconded.
Seconded and adjourned, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Meeting is adjourned.